It's called planning environmental commission meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 7th, and it is 7:04. May we have someone lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Please stand. Thank you, may be seated. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Langley, Commissioner Khan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sherman.
Here.
Vice Chair Wright Sher.
Here.
And Chair Henderson.
Present. Item number four, approval of minutes from the April 16th meeting. Do we have a motion? Second. Roll call, please.
Chair, Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
Chair Henderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman. And Vice Chair Wright Sher.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item number five, oral communications.
This is a time where the public may address the planning commission on items that are not on the agenda, but within the planning commission's jurisdiction. Comments should be limited to three minutes. Does anyone wish to speak? At this time, no member of the public wished to speak to the planning commission meeting.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing item 6A, conditional use repeat, excuse me, conditional use permit, 2-24, request of a conditional use permit per section 18-32.3030B of the Gardena Municipal Code to allow beer and sale wa- beer and wine and beer sales onsite consumption at a new sushi restaurant within the existing supermarket located in the general commercial C3 zone.
Good evening, Chair Henderson and members of the commission tonight. Planning Assistant Diana Nava will be providing staff presentation.
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission. Tonight I will be presenting on the request for a conditional use permit number 2-24 to allow for the onsite consumption of beer and wine in conjunction with a new sushi restaurant known as Wakasakura. The new restaurant is located within Tokyo Central Supermarket, located at 1740 West Artesia Boulevard, towards the southern end of the city, as shown here in the vicinity map. The property is Zoned C3 General Commercial, as are surrounding properties to the west and to the north across Artesia Boulevard. The property to the east is Zoned R6 Very High Density Residential, which also wraps around the southern end of the property where the supermarket is located. Further south of this area is Zone Official, which includes the Dominguez Channel. These photos here show the site's existing conditions. The left photo shows the exterior of the existing supermarket. The restaurant is located on the second floor of the Tokyo Central Market. And the photo right are the direction signage within the market to show the location of the restaurant. In this slide, you see the existing layout site. The Tokyo Central is composed of one, one-two-story building located to the northwest end of the property. The property consists of parkings all throughout the shopping center, with the primary car park located on the south of the property. As seen in this slide, the current restaurant is to not modify existing floor plan as they will continue to utilize the floor. There will be 188 seats available in total for customers, with three tables located to the left of the dining area, and 41 more tables used for food seating to the right. In accordance with the Gardena Municipal Code, Section 18.32.030. B, any establishing wishing to serve or sell alcohol is subject to obtain a conditional use permit, in addition to the city requires for a CUP. Businesses must also obtain the proper license for the State Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control. Therefore, the applicant will be subject to obtaining a type 41 on license to serve and sell beer and wine in conjunction with the restaurant. The application, the applicant's current business hours are from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily from Monday to Sunday. According to the Alcohol Beverage Control, there are currently seven businesses within the respective census tract with an approval alcohol license for onsite consumption. The project is category exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to the guideline, Sections 15301 Existing Facility, 15061 Subsection B3 No Significant Environmental Implications. According, an addition to the project does not qualify for any other exemptions to the exemptions under Section 15300.2 of CEQA Guidelines. Public hearing notices were duly advertised in the Gardena Valley News and mailed to the owners and occupants within 300 feet of the project site on April 25th, 2024. No letters regarding the project has been received. Staff recommends to adopt Resolution Number PC924, approving conditional use permit number 2-24, subject to the attached conditions of approval and direct staff to file a notice of exemption. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, well, at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and may we have the applicant, please?
The applicant is not present tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Questions? No questions for staff?
Was there anyone else besides the applicant who wanted to address it before you closed the public hearing?
We don't have any speaker cards at this time.
Okay, so then we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number PC9-24, approving conditional use permit number 2-24, subject to the attached conditions of approval and direct staff to file a notice of exemption.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Wright Sher.
Yes.
Chair Henderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman.
Yes.
Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 6B, Site Plan Review 7-23, Environmental Assessment 21-23, and then density bonus requested. The planning, the planning commission would consider the requests of the following approvals for multi-family development residential housing, project consisting of 300 units, including 17 affordable units and a six-story podium apartment buildings. Site reviewed to demolish existing site on commercial and industrial building and to construct a six-story residential building with one sub-level terran- uh, subterranean parking structure for 300 apartment units located in high-density bonus area, R6 zone.
Chair, at this time, if yourself or anyone on the commission has had any meetings with the developer, at this time is the time to disclose that.
I met with the developer on another project.
I also met with the developer on another project.
I also met the developer on another project.
Yes, I too have met with the developer on another project on April 23rd. Thank you.
Okay, so, good evening, Chair Henderson and members of the planning commission. I will be presenting the staff presentation involving Agenda Item Number 6B. For some background, on March 21st of last year, the applicant, known as the Percern Group, filed a preliminary application pursuant to the Senate Bill 330 for a 300-unit residential development project at 1610 West Artesia Boulevard. And subsequently, an additional SB 330 preliminary application was filed on September 19th of last year. And on November 10th, 2023, a formal application for a site plan review, environmental assessment, and density bonus requests was filed for the development of a 300-unit apartment building, including 17 affordable, affordable units at the subject site. Subject site is a 3.4, approximately a 3.43 acre lot, again located at 1610 West Artesia Boulevard. That's south of Artesia Boulevard, just, just east of Western Avenue, and actually just a few parcels down from Tokyo Central, which you just heard a request for a conditional use permit at. A photo here before you shows a close-up of the, of the parcel. Currently, again, along the south side of Artesia Boulevard currently has three access points of Artesia. It's adjacent to the Apollo Embroidery Industrial Buildings to the, to the west, and the Artesia Square, a mixed-use development consisting of a town, three-story townhome on developments, as well as commercial buildings. The subject site is zoned R6, that's the very high-density, multifamily density residential zone, as is the, the site to, directly to the west of the, of the project. If you recall, within the house, the, the most recent housing element update, these two zones, parcels were rezoned for the new designated very-high-density residential zone, known as the R6 zone. Surrounding residential, sorry, surrounding zoning designations include the Artesia Mixed Use, as previously noted, to the, to the east. Officials, including, which encompasses the Dominguez Channel to the south. Again, the same parcel zoning designation to the, to the west, and other commercial zoning districts across Artesia Boulevard. To provide some project overview, the applicants are proposing again a 300-unit apartment building, which will include 283 market rate units and 17 affordable units at a very low-income designation. As mentioned, the, the proposed building is a six-story podium apartment building with one level of subterranean parking. The units are a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, ranging in size from 515 square feet to 1,280 square feet. The applicant's requests tonight are for an environmental, approval of an environmental assessment, a site plan review, and a density bonus request, again for the 300-unit apartment building. To begin, I want to first go over the density bonus requests, as this will lay down the basis for, for the number of units being proposed at, tonight. So, the density bonus is state law, and it's based off of a sliding scale. So, based off on a percentage of the affordable units that a project is proposing, under the state's density bonus law, the project is entitled to a certain percentage of increase in density. In addition to an increase in density, the development projects are also subject to a certain number of incentives or concessions, which is also based on a sliding scale. And we'll go over what a concession is later in the, in the presentation. In addition to that, the, the projects are subject to unlimited number of waivers to development standards that physically preclude the project, as well as a reduced parking standard. As part of the, the request tonight, and, under the state's density bonus law, the developers are asked to enter into an agreement with the city for the affordable housing units. So, as mentioned, the project is zoned R6, and that's the newly implemented zoning district, again in the last housing element cycle. This is the highest residential density that the, the city zoning map has, and it is, and it allows for a minimum of 51 to 70 units per acre. So, for this site, 3.43, that would mean 240 dwelling units by right. So, that, under the state density bonus law, is considered what's called the, the base number of units. So, with the base units of 240 dwelling units, the applicants have guaranteed that 17 of those will be dedicated for very-low affordable income households. So, in total, that's a, a total of 7% of the number of units. Those 17 units will include 10 studios, six one-bedrooms, and one two-bedroom units. With 7% provided for affordable units, the, the project is allowed up to a 25% density bonus, so, or an additional 60 units. So, that's how we get to the 300 unit dwelling units as proposed tonight. And as mentioned before, under the state's law, the, given the percentage of affordable number of units, the project is subject to, is subject to provide for one concession or incentive. Under state plan, so, a concession is considered a reduction in site development standards or a modification of the city's zoning code requirements or architectural design requirements that would exceed the minimum building standards that would, that would result in an indefiable and actual cost reduction. And tonight, under the request for, for the project, the applicants are requesting a concession for, from the city's standards within the design criteria for, for windows. Under the Gardena Municipal Code, Section 1842, Subsection 120, Subsection F1, requires that all multifamily residential developments have windows at a recess by a minimum of four inches or be surrounded by molding at at least three and one, three and a half inches around each of the windows. The applicants do not wish to, to comply with this specific design standard as it would, as providing a four-inch would physically have a, have a substantial cost in regards to the framing around the structure of each window. The applicants are proposing a two-inch window recession for each. Allowing the reduction to two-inch would provide a cost savings to the applicant. And as mentioned, under the state's density bonus law, the project is subject to unlimited number of waivers. A waiver is a reduction in development standards and is required where the developer, where the development standard would have the effect that would physically preclude the construction of the allowed number of density units. So, again, the 300 units that is being proposed tonight. And under the request, the applicants are requesting for, under the state's density bonus law, a waiver of three, from three development standards, first being of the maximum high of 75 feet within the R6 zoning district. The applicants are requesting a waiver to allow for, of that, to allow for the construction of the building of up to 84 and a half feet to allow for those additional, for the construction of those additional units. As well as a waiver from the minimum amount of storage space required within the R6 zone, which is 80 continuous cubic feet, a private secure storage space for each dwelling unit, which in this case would result in 24,000 cubic feet. The applicants are proposing to provide 124 storage spaces totaling 11,520 square feet of storage space located within the, the podium within this parking area. And lastly, a waiver for variations in wall planes of a minimum of two feet for every 25% of the facade of the first and second floors, as, as indicated within the city's municipal code for all new multifamily developments. The project does have a design that, that, that looks to meet the intent of this design requirement. As mentioned, under state law, for density bonus projects are subject to different parking standards than what is set forth in the city's municipal code. And that is for zero-to-one bedrooms, is a one parking space per unit. For units of two to three bedrooms, it's one and a half parking spaces. And for four or more bedrooms, it's two and one-half parking spaces per unit. These number of parking spaces requirements includes guest parking space requirements as well. This is a breakdown of all the, the types of units proposed in the project. And as shown, under density bonus law, the, the applicant's proposal is subject to provide a minimum of 347 spaces. And as shown in the project plans, applicants are proposing a total of 507 spaces. So, City of Gardena Municipal Code calls for a site plan review that is brought before the planning commission when a project involves the development of four or more residential dwelling units. So, again, tonight, the applicants are, are bringing forth that before the planning commission. To go over some site design on the project, the site is, will include an accessible, or an access off of Artesia Boulevard, located to the northwest corner of the site. So, as previously noted, there are currently three access points. Two of those will be replaced and maintaining the one along the northwest corner. The proposed building is, is proposed to have a minimum setback of 10 feet from the front, along the street frontage, along Artesia Boulevard. Along the sides is a proposal of a minimum of 10 feet. And a minimum, and the applicants are proposing a regular setback ranging from 5 to approximately 23 feet. Again, as mentioned, under, one of the requested waivers, under the, under the density bonus request, the proposed height for the structure is 84.5 feet. Mentioned, the building includes two levels of parking totaling 507 spaces. 468 are for tenant parking spaces, with 39 for guest parking. On the second level of the parking area, the applicants are proposing 79 bicycle parking spaces. Plans before you hear show the, the north and southern elevations of the property. On the, on the top half is the northern elevation, which will be seen along the street frontage, and the southern area along the, the rear end of the property. So, okay, on the, on the, on the bottom half of the, of the slide. And here are the east elevations and the west elevations. Again, noting that the, the proposal will have variations in, in planes and provide balconies throughout each of the units. Under the Gardena Municipal Code for a site plan review, there are minimum findings that the, that the applicant must meet in order to, for the planning commission to approve the, the request. First is to show that the, the project meets the minimum development standards. As shown in staff's report, the project does meet all the applicable standards of the Gardena Municipal Code, aside from those deviations as requested under the density bonus requests. Again, under staff's report, found that the project meets the, several of the goals and policies, including that of the land use, plan, design plan, and as the city's housing, recently adopted housing element plan, within the, the goals and policies of each of those plans of the Gardena general plan. Staff's report also found that the, the project will have sufficient services to accommodate for the new development, is compatible with the surrounding areas. And as shown later in staff's report, the, the appropriate environmental document has been completed, and the required findings have been made. So, lastly, did want to go over in regards to the, the state's Housing Accountability Act, which limits the capacities of local governments to deny or reduce the density or rendering of a housing development project infeas, infeasible if it is consistent with the objective development standards of the city's municipal code. So, again, as noted, staff has found that the project does meet all of the city's objective standards for a new residential development. Further, staff did provide a no net loss analysis as the site is identif, is one of the identified sites in the 2021, 2029 housing element of the City of Gardena. Within the, the housing element, the site was identified for, for a number of, you know, different levels of income units, including 86 for lower-income units, 26 for moderate-income units, and 60 for above-moderate income units. The project is proposing 17 of those 86 units for lower income and is exceeding the total number of above-moderate income units. However, is not meeting any of the moderate-income units as identified in the housing element. However, staff did prepare, prepare a no-net-loss calculation, which shows that what the remaining sites identified and those projects projected to, to be produced within the city, within the housing element, that the city still has a surplus of sites to accommodate the scene as, the city's rent a number. And as previously mentioned, the city did prepare a, the proper environmental analysis for the project. As part of the project, the city retained the consulting firm, Kimley Horn and Associates, to prepare what's called a Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment, or SCA, to provide, and to provide peer review of the applicants, provided technical studies. The, the SCA document, the draft SCA document was, was put out for a public, a 30-day public review period that occurred between February 20th to March, to March 20th of this year. Copies of that were made available to the planning commissioners during that time. The final SCA report was posted as part of the agenda packet for tonight. And at this time, and staff is going to bring up a representative from Kimley Horn to, to describe the, the findings of the, the environmental assessment that was prepared.
Is this on? Oh, there we go. Good evening, Commissioners. Jesse Barkley with Kimley Horn Associate, Project Manager for the CEQA document. I'll be discussing the SCA as mentioned by city staff, where we are in the process and the findings of the document. So what is a SCA? It's kind of a newer environmental document. You may have, be more familiar with a mitigated NIGDAC or Environmental Impact Report. But it is part of a streamlined process for certain projects, particularly residential projects near transit, under SB 375. And that state, and SB 375 really requires, it, the vision of it is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by really marrying smart land use decisions with transit. One of the requirements is that each regional, regional planning agency like SCAG provide a sustainable community strategy along with their regional transportation plan. And there are provisions for streamlined SECA documents like a SCA. Now, SCA is like an M&amp;D. All impacts must be mitigated to a level of less than significant. And there are certain topics that a SCA for a residential project need not address, such as cumulative effects that have been addressed and mitigated in prior EIRs, growth inducing impacts and impacts from cars and light duty truck trips on global warming. Additionally, because all impacts must be mitigated, there is no need to study alternatives. Using requirements for a SCA or a transit priority project like this project, the project was evaluated to be consistent with the general plan, a general use designation, density, building intensity, and criteria, and all mitigation measures in the SCAG RTPSCS. And it met those three criterias at the bottom of the screen. One of the criterias is to be at least 50% residential. This project is 100% residential. A minimum density of 20 units an acre. This project has a net density of 88 dwelling units an acre. And we need to be within one half mile of a transit stop or high quality transit corridor. And we are, we're in one half mile of southwestern avenue, an identified high quality transit corridor, and we're well served by different various bus routes. So therefore, the project does qualify for a SCA. Where we are in the process, we prepared an initial study in SCA. As mentioned, we circulated, the city circulated it for 30 days from February to March of this year. We've prepared a final SCA, which includes, includes the responses to comments we've received during that 30-day period. And here we are today, we're holding a, a public hearing with the planning commission, and then off, then on to city council. And then finally, we will be able to issue a notice of determination if the project is approved. I talked a little bit about streamlining opportunities for a SCA, but I want to emphasize, a SCA still evaluates the 20 or so environmental topics that are required as part of the SECA checklist. From aesthetics to greenhouse gases to wildfire, all were evaluated in the SCA. And the SCA found that there were no significant and unavoidable impacts. There were six topics that required mitigation measures to achieve less than significant. And they are, they are cultural, geo, specifically paleo resources and geo, hazards, noise, tribal cultural resources, and utilities and service systems. There were three comment letters that were received during the 30-day period from Los Angeles County Sanitation District, Caltrans, and the County of Los Angeles Fire Department. We've prepared a final SCA, which includes the comment letters and responses, revisions, clarifications, and an associated mitigation monitoring reporting program. I want to note that the letters required very insignificant modifications to the SCA and some clarifications and corrections to the text, but there were no new impacts or substantial increase in the severity of an environmental impact identified in the SCA. That concludes my presentation. We'll be available for any questions.
Thank you. We have any questions? We've got questions to staff? In the project?
I'm trying to get to the rest of the presentation. I'm going to bring up the, a few more slides, just wrapping up here on staff's presentation. But lastly, this item before you tonight was published in the Gardena Valenews in mail to owners and occupants within a 300-foot radius on April 25th of this year. To date, there have been three comment letters received and actually a fourth one just right before the meeting in support of the project. All, all copies of the comment letters have been provided to each of the council, or each of the planning commissioners tonight. And copies are provided at the, the front of the council chambers here for members in attendance. So at this time, staff recommends that the planning commission open the public hearing, receive testimony from the public, and adopt two separate resolutions. Resolution number PC 11-24 will, will recommend to the, will ask that the planning commission recommend to the city council that the SCA document and the findings and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project be approved. Again, as noted by Ms. Barkley, the, the SCA approval is, is subject to the city council's decision. But the planning commission tonight is being asked to make a recommendation for approval of that document. In second to that, the planning commission is being asked to adopt resolution number PC 12-24, which would approve the site plan review and the density bonus requested, subject to the conditions of approval and contingent on the approval of the, this SCA by the, by the city council. So at this time, that concludes staff's presentation. If there are any questions from the, the planning commission for staff or for the environmental consultant are available at this time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions for staff?
I'm not sure this is under SEA. Is that SCA? There are 75, if I remember correctly, bike rack accommodations for people riding bicycles. Was there, was that looked into as to how it's going to affect Artesia Boulevard? There's a 10-foot setback, so does that put people on the sidewalks? Or I've been on Artesia Boulevard as a driver and there's no bike lane. There's nothing except cars in the morning in one direction and cars in the evening in the other direction. So has, has that been addressed in any way for the safety of bike riders?
I'll, I'll just address in regards to the number of parking spaces. I believe it's a total of 79, I'm sorry, for bicycle parking spaces. And that's, that's in relation to the new development standards that were established for this new zoning district and, which is for a rate of one space per every four residential dwelling units for long-term spaces. And at a rate of 5% of those spaces for, or for visitor parking at a minimum of one, two parking bicycle racks. So in regards to the long-term bicycle parking and short-term bicycle parking, applicants are meeting those minimum requirements. But in regards to the bicycle lanes, requests, the city does have a master bicycle route within, within the area. There was no requirement as part of the project to, to, for the applicants to, to provide those minimum, to install that, that infrastructure along Gardena Boulevard. But as part of the project, residential development, there is a, a requirement for paying a minimum impact fee and those impact fees can, can, can be dedicated towards, towards those city improvements. But for, particularly for this project, and no, there was no requirements directly for installation of bicycle lanes.
Yeah, I'm totally glad there's a number of bike racks and they're moving towards that. But I, I have a concern that it's on Artesia Boulevard. And if you have pedestrians going to the bus stops and you have bikes within a, on a 10-foot setback, not even how, how wide the sidewalk is, they're going down to say Western Avenue. I just think that somewhere that needs to be thought about for the safety of those who decide to ride a bike. Because I just don't think being on Artesia Boulevard itself is at this time safe. That's, that's, that worries me, that's all.
Last thing I will just want to note is that the applicants have prepared a presentation for tonight before the planning commission. If you have further questions for staff, feel free to, to ask at this time. But just noting that the, a presentation has been prepared by the applicants as well tonight.
Why don't we hear that first?
Well, I, I do have a question for staff. So with the 17 units, affordable, very low housing, it was determined for a 55-year period. How does that, how do we determine 55 years?
That's state law.
State law.
State law sets 55 years for affordable housing for rental units and 45 years if it's for sale.
Thank you. And then my next question is on the table of standard development. So in the presentation, the minimum parking was 1.5. So I'm assuming approval of the density bonus law moves it from, moves it from one as a studio, one to two for one bedroom, to a half? So how do we get to a half parking? Or is this going to be upon the bonus, it just grandfathered?
But I'm not quite sure I understand the question. If you were looking at the city's requirements, there'd be more parking required than, than what is there. The state density bonus law, I think, gives one space for studios, one and a half spaces. So I mean, you don't give a half space.
Correct.
If you've got, just making sure, we've had that confusion before in some cities. If, so if you had two one bedrooms, they'd need to do three spaces.
Okay.
And it's just a multiplication effect. So what was the specific?
That's, I, I must, that was the, the answer there. That was just getting. So the bonus would include that mathematically, which is for that.
Right. The density bonus law requires us to, the most we could have put in was, Amanda, what was it? The, the most?
For, for? Under density bonus law, the parking standards are one for studio.
Right, but what was the total?
347.
347. So they're actually providing more. Density bonus law doesn't even require any guest parking spaces. And they are allocating a certain number of spaces for guest parking in this. And one thing I want to, to clarify that under state law, for any project after 1125 in Los Angeles County and six other counties, parking spaces may no longer be included in rent. So those are rented separately. It's an additional cost. If you're in Orange County, it doesn't apply. If you're in LA County, it does. It's called unbundled parking and the idea is, again, to discourage people from owning vehicles and taking other modes of transportation.
Yeah. Okay, my question goes to the low-income rentals. What happens if someone rents a low-rental unit? And three years later, they're making a lot more money?
The Affordable Housing Agreement requires yearly verification. And if someone incomes out of it, that, that, then they are given six months and they have to leave. I think we give them like a six-month period to, because you just don't want to say get out tomorrow.
Right.
But they do have to vacate the unit and make it available again for another low-income family.
Okay, then the other question, these are for 55 years. And so in other words, if that unit is vacated, it's still a low-income unit. It stays that for 55 years.
Correct, correct.
Are there any more questions for staff?
Yes, I do. Regarding the existing businesses, are they being relocated?
That's a question that the applicants can address once the public hearing has been opened.
Okay. Any more questions for staff? Well, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. And if we could have the applicant, please.
Good evening, Chair Henderson and members of the planning commission. Thank you for gathering tonight to consider our site plan approval. My name is Greg Nakahira. I have been a member of the Pasern Group for almost three decades. First off, we would like to acknowledge a few members of the city staff. Amanda Akuna, you have done an extraordinary job guiding our team and keeping everyone on track. We are very fortunate to work with Greg Sujucci and Lisa Krenitz, who have been invaluable in managing this challenging process. Everyone at the Pasern Group is grateful and thank, thanks you for your expertise and efforts. The Pasern Group is very fortunate to work with the best and brightest in the industry, which I believe reflects in the final submittal we have before you. Members from our consultant team are present tonight to answer any questions that might arise. The Pasern Group is a family office for Ken Pasern, who resides and established his company's headquarters in Orange County. The Pasern Group is unique in today's real estate community that relies on institutional capital to, to develop larger properties. The Pasern Group invests its own capital to develop, and we do not sell the completed property or flip the land once it is entitled. We couple this investment philosophy with becoming long-term community members in the cities we invest in. And through the Pasern Family Foundation, we give back to nonprofits in the city. This is a photo of A1 Coast rental site, which is, which had been in business since the 1940s on the northeast corner of Crenshaw and La Mita Boulevard. The Pasern Group completed construction of Kaia in 2020. If you walk the property with Mr. Pasern, he will point out things we did right, but also things that need improvement. He will often say, "Our properties are a laboratory and we learn from our residents." And take that new information to make changes to our newest developments. Our experience at Kaia revealed a large customer base that want to live in the South Bay in properties with elevated design and premium amenities. They tend to be millennials, many of whom have a high level of discretionary income. We used Kaia as the baseline for the design and finish level at 1610 Artesia and have made improvements, which my colleague will expand on. Additionally, we have always believed that projects that contain affordability, if seamlessly integrated in the project, can be successful. And we have proven this. In addition, we believe it is the best method to start to meet the city's affordable housing mandate. And this is the current use of 1610 Artesia. Incidentally, we, we've been working with this seller of this for 10 years. And it's only And it's only been in the last couple of years that they've, they've gotten to a point where they were willing to sell the property and redevelop it. I'd like to introduce Erwin Yao, who's the president of TCA Architects, to discuss some of the project design highlights.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, planning commissioners. Again, my name is Erwin Yao. I'm the president of, let me see if I can advance this, president of TCA Architects. As a team, we are really excited about this project that we are proposing here. We've worked together with the Passern Group now for over 10 years and have designed and built multiple projects around Southern California and a dozen more on the boards right now. And as Greg said, what I think is really special about how the Passern Group approaches projects is that each new project needs to be an improvement from the last. As we design units, look at amenity spaces and architecture, we are being challenged to make the latest design the best new design. And I think that's being reflected here as well. Before we dive into the building, a little bit about the context, I think the staff did a report about this as well. But we really always start with studying the overall context. We always look at the orientation. So the site here is highlighted in yellow. North is pointing upward, and Artesia Boulevard is to the north of the site, and really our only access point into the site itself. So we studied where the best location is for what we call the front door of the project. And in this case, we think it's going to be on the left side of the site, which allows for cars to have a left turn and right turn movement into the project. We also study view opportunities, look at where to put the right units in the right locations. To the north, we have views of downtown and the mountains, and then Palis Verdes to the south. And of course, we also consider our immediate neighbors of the townhomes to the right and existing industrial to the left side. But going down to the ground level, the plan got rotated here, so Artesia Boulevard now is on the right-hand side. The main entrance is off of Artesia on the top of the page. The first garage entrance is mainly for guests, and there are dedicated parking right in the front, kind of in the white parking spaces, next to what we call the resident hub. The resident hub is located on the corner of the project, and it's going to be a mix of coworking spaces, mail rooms, and other residential amenities. The hub is also directly connected to the leasing office, which is going to be on the second floor of the project itself. If you go further down into the garage, there's a resident entry that provides residents access to all of the parking on the ground level, as well as easy access to a ramp down to the subterranean-level parking spaces. And then other amenities on this level include the secured biking, bike parking, and a dog spa as well. When we go up one level, this takes us up to the podium courtyard. The design is five levels of residential units in a donut configuration with a large courtyard into the middle. The amenities here are colored in orange that surround that pool area. We have a 2,700-square-foot clubhouse, which will have a kitchen, multiple seating areas, and entertaining spaces, as well as a private dining room. On the other side of that, towards the north side, we have a 4,000-square-foot fitness area and a wellness space that will have state-of-the-art gym equipment and spa amenities. And then finally, on the bottom of the page there, my favorite amenity, we have a golf simulator room, which you can reserve with your friends and play a virtual round of golf. If we go up to the top floor, we've carved away a couple of units on the corner to put a 3,000-square-foot roof deck and an indoor lounge. The roof deck is located so you can see views of downtown, and will also get great sunset views along the west side. This space is going to offer both indoor and outdoor uses and gathering spaces that we think can be used year-round. All right, so let me take you through kind of a walking tour of the project, a walking tour around the project. This is the main entrance into the project. You're looking at this from Artesia Boulevard, with the resident hub and the leasing office on the corner. The roof deck I just showed you is on the top floor, and then that vehicular entry I mentioned earlier is on the right-hand side. The architecture itself of the project is a contemporary design with bold colors and materials. It has different elements to articulate and soften the scale. We've incorporated brick on the ground-level amenities that we feel can really feel grounded. It'll look like a building that's kind of always been there, and new design, a new design kind of added to that. Above that, we're using semititious panels in a warm terracotta red-colored accent those corners, and you'll see that on multiple corners of the project itself. And then throughout, we use metal balconies, metal louvers, and overhangs that bring a little bit of an industrial feel to the design. The units along the corners as well also have a nice kind of expanded balconies, whenever we're able to give that. This is the other corner of the building from Artesia. This is the view that most people will see of the project when they're coming into Gardena from the 91 freeway. Here, we also accent a corner with enhanced materials, and we also have larger corner unit, I'm sorry, corner windows in the living rooms. And on the upper levels, we raise the ceiling heights and add another foot and provide taller windows there as well. It's another way that we continue to enhance those corner units. Along the south side, as we kind of make our way around the building, this is a view from the southeast corner, if you would look at it from the residential development next door. We're still applying different materials in the middle of the elevation to help articulate the building and make sure it's attractive from all angles. And then the final corner of the project is along that channel, which we, again, we apply the same enhanced treatments along those corners. Along the west side, we've designed the middle section of the building with a base, a middle, and a top to help break down the scale. So going into the courtyard of the project, this is really where I think the project really shines. The architecture on the inside really reflects the same ideas of the architecture on the outside of the building. We think what the residents see and experience is just as important, if not more, than what you'll see from the street itself. So in this rendering here, you'll see the fitness space in the background with a covered California room right in front of it. This allows fitness classes to spill out into the outdoors. The courtyard space itself is over 30,000 square feet, with two pools, a spa, and multiple different hangout spaces, which we think is going to be a great amenity for the residents there. And lastly, let me focus a little bit on the landscaping for the project. What we really put in between the buildings with the right flooring, the right ground materials, plant palette, and activated spaces are critical to the success of any of our projects. This pool area is a resort and hospitality-inspired design with two different pool experiences. On the right-hand side, you have a quiet oasis pool that's going to have cabanas and shade loungings around that. On the left-hand side, a little bit more of an active space, a 75-foot lap pool with an open deck for laying out in the sun or for special events that's put on by management. And then right in the middle, we have an oversized hot tub with a decorative feature backdrop wall. There'll also be multiple areas for barbecue and cooking and joint outdoor dining. On the ground level, let me see here, around the building itself, there's going to be lush layered landscape along the perimeter as well as along Artesia. We also use a variety of pavers and finished concrete on the ground to help signify different entrances into the project. Throughout, we're proposing a combination of date palms and canopy trees that will provide for both shade and privacy. And overall, I think we're proposing a project that should be a really nice place to live. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the design. I'm here to answer any questions later on. For now, let me bring Greg back up to wrap up the presentation. Thank you.
These are some of the businesses and retailers we got support letters from. I'd just point out, AHTKY Insurance, they've been in business for 75 years. And one of the family members of the executives of this company live in our project in Lomita. So they recognize the value of it. I think I told some of you this, but I grew up in Gardena, graduating from Gardena High School, Perry, and Denker. I'm old enough to remember when Gardena had dairy farms. And the Meadow Park Dairy was a landmark drive-in dairy that sat in front of a working dairy farm. You would pull in with your car and buy milk in bottles from a dairy. It was the craziest concept, but that was a landmark property. The Artesia-specific planned corridor was mostly undeveloped fields when I was in grade school. And I spent countless hours riding my dirt bike with my friends in those muddy fields. The city of Gardena had tremendous vision in creating the Artesia Corridor specific plan. As you are well aware, it balances land uses that retain the city's large commercial base and valuable sales tax dollars while providing much-needed upscale housing that would attract young professionals. An early anchor to the corridor was the Tokyo Central Market, formerly the Madukai Market, who sent, the president sent in a support letter for us. But that is owned by an $11 billion parent called Pan Pacific Holding International, based in Tokyo, Japan. And the store really is a destination location for people throughout Los Angeles and Orange County. But I think that is true for the entire Artesia Corridor. It's really become a mini-destination with its abundance of iconic businesses and restaurants. 1610 Artesia is the realization of the city's vision under the Artesia Corridor specific plan. Its new affluent residents will patronize the many businesses and restaurants, keeping the sales tax revenue from leaking out to surrounding communities. What you do not fully realize yet is you are starting a relationship with Ken Passern and the Passern Group, who will become community members in support of your great city. And I would ask you to speak to the city leaders in Lomita or Ceritos, and they will tell you what we have done to support their community. In closing, I will say that I'm certain 1610 Artesia would become a landmark property for the new generation of Gardena residents, much like the Meadow Park Dairy was a landmark for my generation. So thank you for your time and attention. We'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. We have questions for the applicant?
Just one, to your architect. There was a slide that you showed, I think it was looking at the northeast corner where it intersects with the driveway to the houses, yes. And the one worry I have at this point is, again, a blind spot for people trying to drive out from next door to you, because the wall is right to the sidewalk at that point. Is that inaccurate to the submittal on the, on the, on the plan? The white wall?
Yes. Let me double-check that.
I thought that's Artesia Boulevard.
No, that, this is Artesia Boulevard on the right-hand side. I believe this wall is
Right.
existing now. Yeah. So I believe this is an existing wall that's already there that is part of the multifamily existing development.
Just never knew it was that close, that's all. Just, I just worry about, again, blind spots
Of course.
on Artesia Boulevard and how close, if you've got 75 bicycles going on the sidewalk at that point, and a car's trying to come out and go across the street, I don't know. Obviously, now it's not your issue, but it might be an issue that we look at from the city point of view as to how we could make that a little safer, maybe lower in the front to three feet rather than, that looks like it's a six-foot wall, so. Okay. No other questions? Fine.
Chul, your question? Any question? Okay, so, yeah, one of the commissioners brought up a point. With the existing applicants, has there been any plans to relocate them? Because you know, one thing about Gardena, we are, you know, a, what do you want to call it, a small-business-friendly city? And this project, I think there's about 10 different tenants in there. So was there any communication about them relocating, or we would lose their services for the city, for this project?
The majority of the tenants have relocated already. There are probably six remaining, and they're making plans to relocate.
Okay, thank you. Then I have one other question for the project design. The open-air balcony with, you know, it doesn't get severe wind, but it does get pretty windy. So was there any thoughts of having on the entrance side of the facility, a plexiglass or something like that, just to offset some of the wind barriers? Or as a wind barrier for that open-air project?
We have it. Go ahead.
Which portion are you referring to, if I can kind of go back?
Yes, this one here.
Yes, so on the roof deck itself
Yes.
there will be a glass element as part of the guardrail, so that that will provide some level of wind protection.
Okay, thank you.
There's an indoor/outdoor area.
Yeah. And there's, yeah, a part of that roof deck, there's an indoor lounge as part of that amenity space as well. So you can either be inside or outside
Okay.
at any time.
Okay, thank you.
My question regarding local hiring. Do you offer option of hiring local?
You're referring to the folks that are going to build the project?
Yes.
So we, we serve as a general contractor, but we hire out subcontractors to build, build the property for the most part. So we'd certainly entertain it. Any, any help that the city can provide to help us locate people, we would be welcome
Thank you. I have a question. Do you allow pets, tenants to have pets? And if you do, do you have facilities around there to, let's say, accommodate the tenants who have pets, so they won't be just walking their dogs on Artesia Boulevard, you know?
Yes, the resident, the apartment will allow for pets. As one of the amenities, we have a pet spa, which is essentially a bathing kind of facility there. And then there'll be areas along the backside of the project against a channel that allows for pets to go as needed.
So one question. So you mentioned that this is a family-owned entity.
It's a family office, yes.
And your quote was, "We will not flip the property for sale." So this is the part that makes it kind of, kind of hard to, let's say, we're going to look into our crystal ball. By not being a, by not flipping the property, will we always keep the appearance of the facility as it is now, as close as we can? Because this is a very important corridor, as the corridor. So in 15 years, 20 years from now, as things start to deteriorate, is there plans to continue to keep the facades of the property looking as pristine as it is from the day it opened?
Yeah. Chair Henderson, it's an excellent question. And And with our organization, I wish, and you certainly will meet Ken Passern at some point, you know, he treats these assets like they're one of his children. He nurtures it, and you should see how involved he is in the actual design of it, right? And so, one, he will never sell it. It'll be put into a trust when he passes away, managed professionally by a management company that is set up by our company. But, you know, this is, for us to achieve the rental income we want, right, it's important for us to maintain the high quality of the asset, right? And, you know, I'd invite you to see our other assets, to see how great they look.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
We do have a speaker card for one member, the public wishing to speak on the side of...
If I can have Brandon Smith, please step and approach the podium.
Hi, there are planning commission members. Good evening. My name is Brandon Smith. I'm a Gardena homeowner. You've seen me before. I'm a member of South Bay Forward, a chapter of Abundant Housing LA. Just here to speak in support and kind of reiterate my written comment that I submitted, along with a few of my neighbors, actually, who also submitted their comments. You know, it goes without saying, you know, we're in this housing crisis, this is a supply crisis, this is adding supply to the market, you know, it's a housing market like everything else, you know, more supply helps out and everything. So, you know, like you said, the city positions itself as a very pro-business. They've said it better than I could ever have. You know, the local businesses nearby, you know, incredible restaurants are going to get a lot of business from this development. Commissioner Langley, as a biker, bike commuter, I appreciate your concern for us bikers. I usually bike basically just like this to work, when I do bike, and I appreciate your concern and look forward to working with you for, you know, new safe bike facilities, segregated from car traffic, kind of like you're talking about, to make things safer for us on the road. You know, this complex, at least when it comes to bikes, is very close to walkable, but also, you know, shortly bikable on the sidewalk, to the Line 2 loop. The G-trans buses have at least two bike racks on the front. I usually always use them when I take G-trans. And it's just a great jumping-off point, so I'm excited to see these 79 bike parking spaces as well. And then not to mention the torrent transit line, you know, 13 bus stops in front, which will offer more access to the overall metro transit system. You know, finally, by being redeveloped, you know, we'll be able to collect even more tax revenue from the property itself, you know, resets the tax basis. The city is always, you know, every city around California has always needed more money, better facilities, you know, improving our roads, improving our bike facilities and everything there. So I'm excited and look forward to that as well. And then one last thing, to modify, one last comment in my written statement, I might have done my math wrong, but I will say that I think the RHNA slide that the city staff showed did not include the denial of the Normandy project from last month, so I will say that that also needs to be taken into account in considering this one as well in the overall impact to the surplus that we have in the housing element for our RHNA needs. But anyway, thank you. This is obviously the pro-business decision, you know, the pro-citizen decision, and I look forward to your approval of the project and meeting these new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, just for clarification for the audience, the project at 16911 Normandy was not denied. The planning commission recommended denial. The applicant came back and clearly stated he was trying to rework the project, and final approval of that project is with the city council, so it's just kind of out there in limbo while the applicant's reworking it, but no final actions been taken on it.
Thank you.
We also have two additional speakers for this item.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shaimir Monroe. I live across the street from the project that's going to be developing, right on Artesia Boulevard off of Denker. And my concern is, we're already facing parking issues. I live in a cul-de-sac, and already people from the other housing that's there, the, what's that, the other building, they're parking, they're walking across the street, parking in our area. And I'm wondering if there's going to be a solution to that? Will there be permit parking for us residents? We, I live in a six-unit apartment building, literally right across, I mean, right facing Artesia Boulevard. And that's one issue. And the other issue is the noise level. There's already a significant loud noise level already with the traffic there. Yes, I understand, I live in a boulevard. But my other concern is the construction noise. There is, those of us that are working from home, so my concern is, what is, how is that going to be feasible with the noise from the development during the day? And again, also from residents. I'm imagining, yes, it's a positive thing, but also I'm looking at it like it's going to be offsetting for us residents already with the parking situation. So just wondering. And, oh, and then there should be a light, because there's numerous of accidents I've witnessed since I've been living here for five years, of accidents right there on Denker, Denker and Artesia Boulevard. Right, like, right after you pass west, if you're coming from the beach area, passing western, people are always racing down the street. So there's, that's the issue right there, too. So, and I have it pulled up here on my phone, the picture of how it looks. There's only, one main street is western, and the other one is where Rascals is, can't see the name of that street. But there is like, there is no stop sign or anything right there. So that's, I can see already it's going to be an issue of people making U-turns and all kinds of mess going on. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, if I can have Renee Arregui.
Hello, honorable council members. I'm the owner of 17341 Denker Avenue, the building that is right in front of where this new project's going to take place. Yeah, one of my concerns was the parking for the people that actually reside on Denker Avenue. Pretty much Denker, half the street is mostly four-unit apartment complexes, so there isn't a whole lot of parking on that street. So I would suggest maybe possibly thinking of possible additional parking permits possibly for the residents that live in that area, because we do have members of, or people that live across the street that do park on Denker Avenue in front of the apartment or on that street. And in addition, just in general, I actually just came from Kai, the other units, visiting a friend there. And when it comes to affordable housing, hopefully they have, or you will, have enough affordable housing, because the one-bedroom apartment there was $3,500. I know I don't charge that much for my one-bedroom units there. So hopefully, there's enough affordable units that are addressed for people that will be living there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So, quick question. One of the, somebody mentioned about the parking and far, I mean, as the noise. Could you please, from Kimblehorn, to come back and address what the findings are for construction noise for that, please?
Yeah. Let me speak about Jesse Barclay again, Kimblehorn, about the noise. The noise for operation and construction was found to be less than significant. For construction, we do have a mitigation measure, noise one, best construction methods, which requires that specifications include provisions that require best practices to be used during construction to ensure the ambient noise is less than significant. And some of these methods includes placing advanced mufflers, internal combustion engines for all noise generating construction equipment, properly maintaining the equipment, and enclosing stationary noise-producing machinery while operating. And so those, that mitigation measure will reduce any construction impact noise.
Thank you. Any more questions for the applicant? At this time, I'll close the public hearing, and we will contemplate vote.
Just with Greg, when they are talking about parking permits on Denker, what they were saying, is that feasible?
Commissioner, there's a procedure in the Gardena Municipal Code that requires petition of a certain number of residents in the area to file a request for a parking district, and then it's examined by the police department. So it is feasible, but it does require, it's not something the city institutes on its own.
That wouldn't be a part of this project. That would be a separate process.
That would be a separate project.
And remember, they, you know, the minimum parking they were required to provide was 347.
Right.
They're providing over 500 parking spaces on this project.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for the applicant. I'm wondering if you already decided on the rent, the market rent, the affordable rent?
Commissioner, I'll address the affordable rent. The affordable rent's going to be set by the formula set forth in state law of, was it 30 to 50, less than 50%? I'm not exactly sure what the formula is, but that affordable is, in fact, determined by a percentage of the median income in Los Angeles County. So it can't be set at this point, because we don't know what the median income will be at the time they're ready to pull their building permit, so it gets set closer to that point.
Commissioner, on the market rent, we haven't set, we haven't set them yet. They will be similar to what we have at Kaya. And there, you know, there are ranges, different, so, you know, a one-bedroom can range from, you know, the high 2,000s to the mid 3,000s, right? But they're, depending on what the unit is and the location, that's how we set our rents. So, but we haven't done it yet.
Greg, could you, you shared with, I know the two of us, how you did the, just, it's an educational thing at this time, how you did that, the rent for the, how many units, how many special affordable units are at Kaya?
At Kaya, we do not have any affordable rents.
Oh, you don't?
We do not.
Those are moderate, then?
They're all above moderate rents at Kaya.
Okay. Any more questions? So do we have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to adopt a resolution number PC 11-24 recommending to the city council that the Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment, SCEA, findings and mitigation monitoring, monitoring and reporting program for the 1610 West Artesia Boulevard project to be approved.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Reitcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
I have a question. Is this, is this just regarding the SCA thing that we're talking about?
Commissioner, there's...
Or is this everything?
There's two items before you tonight. One is, this resolution's a recommendation to the city council to approve the SCA. By state law, if our appeal fee is more than $500, which it is in Gardena, then the city council has to be the deciding body on the SCA. The second resolution is an approval of the project, which you are making the final decision on, subject to the city council approving the SCA. And of course, it can be appealed, or the council could call the project for review. But for tonight, you'd be making basically a contingent, assuming you approve it, a contingent approval of the project.
I'll say no, then.
To the SCA?
Yes.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
And Chair Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
So this is the second one to adopt?
This is, this the actual approval of the project?
Okay. Adoption Resolution Number PC 12-24, approving site plan review that number 7-23, and density bonus request, subject to the attached conditions of approval and contingent upon the approval from the city council for the SCA.
SCA.
Anyway, that one. And mitigating, monitoring, and reporting program prepared for the project.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reitcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman? And Chair Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Thank you. Item seven, Community Development Director's Report.
I think there's several items worth mentioning. They're all happening on May 11th, so it's a busy Saturday, May 11th. One is personal and close to my heart. It's the annual fishing derby over at Alondra Park. My son caught his first fish there when he was two years old, so that's a big deal to me, but, and being a Kiwanis member, that's something we also support, so that's coming up. And then second, of course, it's Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Island Heritage Month, and this Saturday, again, May 11th, there will be an event where there's music, entertainment, food, and vendors, so should be some good food there. And then lastly, is the Secret Garden Brunch, and I think Commissioner Sherman may have a little insight to this, but over at The Willows, they will have a paint and create event. I don't know exactly what that's about, but I imagine you're creating and painting some artwork regarding The Willows and possibly some Mother Nature-type stuff, so. Commissioner Sherman, do you want to elaborate on that?
Let me put it to you this way. My wife is much more involved with The Willows than I, so thankfully, that's not something I'm involved with.
Okay. And that's, that ends my report.
Thank you, Greg. Item number eight, Planning Environmental Quality Commissioners Report.
Langley, nothing.
I have no report.
No report.
No report.
And I would like to thank the city, the Cinco de Mayo Parade, with the nostalgic cars. The Cinco de Mayo parade with the nostalgic cars is just very dear. It was, it was a blast to see, you know, some of the, just the history. It's nothing else but the history and the artwork that goes into restoring these things. But again, it was a very nice, nice thing. I just saw it passing. I said no way I was going to be a part of it, but I just saw it pass to see the cars and all that stuff. And myself, no report. Well, meetings adjourned. It is 8:37.